Call a meeting to order in accordance with nine forty C M R two nine point one zero. Remote participation adopted by the Greater Lowell Technical School Committee, April seventeen, two thousand and fourteen. Committee men Lemay and school business administrator Michael Knight will be participating in tonight's meeting remotely. Purpose of the meeting is a public meeting for the purpose of finalizing the budget.
I'd like to turn it over to you, Fred.
Okay, well, we're having a budget meeting today for the school year twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. So we're going to go over the overall budget itself and how we will be spending and allotting funds for Greater Lowell Tech to move forward and progress for our whole student body. And I'm going to hand this meeting over to the superintendent.
Thank you. So I'd like to begin the F Y twenty-three preliminary budget discussion by informing everyone that this preliminary budget was developed based on the Governor's House budget proposal and data and input from our administrators, teachers, parents, and community partners, incented around improving student achievement in order to develop confident learners and skilled workers. The Massachusetts House Senate and the Governor approved a change in the state funding formula for public education, which has significantly impacted the F Y twenty-three budget. The bill provides an investment of one point five billion dollars into schools over the next seven years. The bill is aimed at tackling inequities specifically for school districts with higher percentages of low-income students, English-language learners, and special education students in order to close the achievement gap. We received an increase of two million six hundred and sixty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars to chapter seventy-eight. The budget that I am recommending to the committee includes more than three million dollars in additional spending, a total of six point three six percent increase over this year's budget. The Governor's House budget proposed is a direct result of the revised Foundation Budget Formula, which reflects an increased per pupil expenditure, as you can see in the slide in front of you, to add additional funding to schools with higher numbers of E L L spend in low-income students. The base rate for a vocational student was raised to fifteen million six hundred and ninety-seven thousand and seventy-one cents. This is a seven hundred and forty-four dollar increase. For special education students, we received twenty-nine thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty-five cents, which is a thousand-dollar, two-hundred-and-seventy-dollar increase. And currently, we're at approximately sixteen point five-six percent spent students. For E L L students, we received two thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars and forty-three cents increase, which is an increase of three hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-five cents from last year. For low-income categories, as you can see on the bottom of the slide, these categories were added in F Y twenty-one that did not exist before and continue to be maintained in F Y twenty-three. Approximately sixty-one percent of our students are low-income, which allows us to fall in category ten, for which we receive an additional five thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty-four cents, which is an increase from last year of six hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy cents. So that's an overall view of our foundation budget and the increase in per pupil expenditures for F Y twenty-three. Moving on to the next slide is an overview of the foundation budget. Based on the new rates of per pupil expenditure set by the state in our current enrollment, our foundation budget increased by two million nine hundred and fifty-two thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars, which is a six-point-three percent increase over this year's budget, making this a historic budget. And our total foundation budget for twenty-three is forty-nine million three hundred and forty-nine thousand and five hundred dollars. This is year two of a six-year S O A implementation. We should expect roughly the same budget increase over the next four years. It is important to note that only two percent or two hundred and eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars of this is through our town assessments or minimum required contribution. And the total minimum required contribution is fourteen million seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. The two million nine hundred and fifty-two thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars is all net school spending required funding that needs to be spent each year in addition to future budget increases, which a total foundation budget of forty-nine million three hundred and forty-nine thousand and five hundred for F Y twenty-three, again, a difference of two million nine hundred and fifty-two thousand seven hundred and seventy in an overall increase of six point three six percent. Slide four is our proposed F Y twenty-three revenue budget. Mike, are you on the line?
Yep, I am.
Would you like to do this, or I can do it, whatever you prefer?
Sure, no, I can take this slide.
Okay.
So as you saw, as you saw on the last slide, the effect of those changed per pupil expenditure numbers that were put forth by the state was a significant increase to our budget, moving us up to, moving us up by three million dollars roughly last year. So the revenue that supports that comes, as you saw on the last slide, came only two percent from the required contribution or the assessment to our town, with the vast majority of that coming from our net chapter seventy or state aid contribution. So what that turns into for our revenue budget was, in the F Y twenty-three year, we've actually reduced our use of excess and deficiency from two hundred thousand down to one hundred thousand. We'll talk about this a little bit later in our presentation, but out of budget finance subcommittees, we mentioned that this is a strategic move, not contributing to our O P E S trust fund this year as we are looking for some capital projects in the future. We want to maintain as much of that excess and deficiency balance as possible in case we need it for those projects. In the next section down here is the assessment to our member communities, which includes not just the minimum local contribution, which we saw an increase of two hundred and eighty-nine thousand two on the last slide, but also our transportation and debt numbers, which is why the total trust is actually increasing by one million two hundred and twenty-six thousand three hundred and forty dollars. This is largely due to the transportation reimbursement amount that was budgeted in F Y twenty-two and then reduced in F Y twenty-three. So if we go down to the state aid section, we'll, you see that transportation number reducing from one point seven million as the, as a projection for the F Y twenty-two budget, which we're currently in, down to nearly one million dollars in the F Y twenty-three budget. And this wasn't actually as a result of any state cuts or anything along those lines. What had happened was is we probably actually budgeted more than the revenue was going to be in the F Y twenty-two year, but we'll be able to make up that difference or that shortfall in revenue as a result of savings that we've had in transportation over the last, over the last budget year, which we were able to put to that transportation revolving account. So it's really like a overestimation of the revenue in the current year causing what looks like a large increase in the assessment for the next year. But this is based off of, the one point seven number was based off of where we used to spend for transportation prior to the pandemic and when we had shutdowns and reduced service for transportation. And those types of things, that was looking at roughly a seventy-five percent reimbursement on what we would have spent if we had had every day of transportation. And but moving into the F Y twenty-three year, they're looking at reimbursing based on the actual expenditure that we incurred in the previous years, which did at much reduced cost of the transportation side. So that's why we see that delta there. The chapter seventy number, as we saw on the last slide, increased by two million six hundred and eighty-two thousand for the year.
Mike, what, Mike?
Which increases to the, to the assessment at state aid, we had an increase of the budget overall at three million eighty-nine thousand ninety-one dollars.
Mike, one question on the transportation piece, being, you know, lower to a million five thousand. How will that affect transportation moving forward for the next upcoming years?
It's actually going to kind of be a, I think we're here almost an anonymous dip in the, in the reimbursement, because we are seeing that even though we're having some reduced costs from transportation this year, that thing by and large has totally rebounded. So the state estimate comes in a little bit low here. We might see that revised up as the budget gets finalized coming into the summer months. I actually sort of anticipate that. But we're in a good situation here at Greater Lowell Tech, where we've established that transportation revolving account. So if we were to receive additional funding above this million-dollar number, what we'll be able to do is save that for our member communities to offset the assessment that follows next year. So it's likely a little bit of a conservative estimate at that one million-dollar number, but I do anticipate that we'll rebound and actually be able to use any additional revenue that we see next year in this budget for the future years beyond that. So the F Y, it'll sort of carry the F Y twenty-four year to get a reduction in assessment.
Thank you.
Curtis Lemay, I'm here, and I apologize.
Welcome.
So the next slide has to do with our budget priorities for the F Y twenty-three school year. As you, as you can see, we're focused on student achievement and allocating funds during to maintain support in our academic or required classes and our tech, technical programs, as well as to address the persistent achievement gap, keeping our class sizes manageable and providing a full schedule of course offerings. And those courses stem from C P courses all the way to A P indoor enrollment courses, supporting inclusion and high expectations for all of our students, improving the social, emotional well-being for our students, and providing professional development and coaching to our staff to meet the needs of our diverse learners, as well as continuing to keep up with equipment purchases for technical programs based on recommendations from our advisory committees, ensuring high-quality instruction and the, that we keep up with, the ever-changing changes in industry. So our students are prepared for a competitive employment when they leave Greater Lowell, and of course, supporting educational equity and opportunity for all of our students. And those are our budget priorities, as well as actually to continue some professional development in project-based learning for students. And I talked about technical equipment purchases. So those are our budget priorities for the F Y twenty-three school year. Moving on to the next slide, which is our proposed F Y twenty-three expenditure budget. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Knight again. Mike, are you still there?
All right, so, yeah, I am. You hear me, right?
Yes.
All right, so looking at our expenditures, we saw sort of regulate or what we would anticipate based on the budget priorities, some increases for staffing additions, which we'll see coming up here in our administrative and instructional units. Our fixed charges are always sort of dominated by insurance being the biggest number. We didn't know it's forcing that number up on an annual basis. We're in a great spot with our health trust for insurance and anticipate that we've, or I've seen that we've been able to maintain this number pretty well with fixed charges. But again, that just does tend to be a budget driver. The, also of note, the operation of plant here looks like it's taking a very large cut. That was in part due to the revised budget for F Y twenty-two. When we received additional state funding late into the budget process, we were able to then take that funding and really direct it towards building needs for the current year. So we're looking at a number of different projects and, and I guess a fortunate situation with state funding that allowed us to focus a little bit heavy on plants and doing some improvement projects along, around the building in this year. But it puts us back more in line with what we use for our annual budget every year in the operation of plant services. And then the other item of note, I guess, is the reduction down to zero of our O T F contribution for this year. And again, that was a strategic move on our part to try to maintain the excess and deficiency balance, knowing that we have capital projects upcoming, so that we can supply our own contingency if anything were to happen with a project that we, that needed additional costs or anything along, along those lines. So again, the expenditure budget matches our revenue budget increase. So we see that three million eighty-nine thousand dollar increase for the year.
The next slide, Mike, is the notable expenditure changes not related to personnel.
Just a, I have a, I put a little bit on the, on the last page. I guess I didn't talk about the first item here on the last page, but one of our other initiatives that we're looking to push forward here at Greater Lowell Tech was the adoption of the universal free breakfast and lunch program for all students. We have been not under what they call a C D two program or community eligibility program in the past, but saw great success with the program through the COVID-nineteen virus. That was funded federally. The news came out recently that the federal, that federally it won't be funded as universally free coming next school year. So we thought it was a great budget use to be able to put that on Greater Lowell Technical High School socket and take on the projected additional cost of that for our students. Again, health insurance and dental insurance are always big drivers within the budget. This number seems pretty low, the three hundred and fourteen thousand dollar number. But the overall, we've done very well with that trust, like I said before, to help us maintain that cost. Our transportation costs are rising annually with our contract that has a schedule of fees per transportation run called out per year. So it did have a two hundred and sixty thousand dollar increase to the expenditure line, and that is net of the offsets for their use of the revolving fund or the reimbursed fund these days. That was just a, a straight line increase, the increase on the expenditure side. And then also, we talked about our budget priority, having the focus on our technical shops. We did have plumbing and electrical shops requests that we look at the potential of redesign of those shops for next year. So we're going to begin that process and see if we can get those, I guess, modernized and improved for the instruction in those two states.
Moving on to the next slide is the personnel expenditures included on, in the budget. And again, it's tab eight, page one in your binders. And I'll talk a little bit about the personnel. Again, beginning with human resources, adding a coordinator of talent acquisition in H R systems. This position would support the director of human resources with recruitment and maintaining information platforms pertaining to recruitment activities around diversity. Currently, the director of H R spends a significant amount of time conducting investigations, writing reports, E O C, A C A, health insurance benefits, five oh four accommodations, queries and budgeting, and this position would offset some of those responsibilities. The next is in the area of special education. In special education, we're looking to add three special education instructors, two work site aides, and a school psychologist, along with daily substitutes. This again is to meet the diverse needs of our student population and maintain support in our core required classes for students with disabilities, as well as in their technical program areas to address the achievement gap. It's also to support, to increase inclusion and co-teaching sections in order to lower the classroom ratios for students with disabilities who are in inclusion classes, and at the same time, increasing support in these classes. An additional school psychologist to support initial and reevaluations, as well as specialized testing for all special education students, as well as an addition of two work site aides needed to accommodate the increased number of postgraduate students. These would be our postgraduate students in our transitional occupations program and remain in compliance with the student-teacher ratios that, that, that are required for students with significant disabilities. These individuals go outside the building and support all off-site work experiences. In this year, we have an increased number of students that are post-graduates. Moving down to our English language education program, we're looking to increase two instructors, one paraprofessional, and a director of language acquisition due to the increased number of E L E students, along with performance and compliance monitoring responsibilities that are new to English language education. A director of language acquisition is needed to create balanced-level teams for English learners in order to strengthen their academic literacy and acquisition of the English language, as well as we're looking to strengthen the ability to embed literacy instructional strategies for all students. One of the responsibilities of the director of language acquisition is to coordinate the literacy action team, which would enable the team to embed literacy across the curriculum in both academic and technical program areas, as well as to increase educated diversification and a creation of a program focused on newcomers or students with low-level English language acquisition. And that's why we are asking for those positions in regards to English language education. The next positions would be two English-language arts, arts teachers to reduce class size, two social studies instructors, again, to reduce class size, as well as to create the opportunity for electives in the social studies department. And we're looking to add the elective of psychology, psychology for next year to social studies. The next is a math instructor, one math instructor and one math instructor coach. The math instructor coach would, would assist the chairperson with instructional improvement and work with teachers and support teachers diversifying their instructional strategies. The next is in the area of Title One reading of paraprofessional to provide targeted reading and writing assistance to more students to close the gap, those students who are below grade level. As you know, now we are a Title One school, and the addition of a Title One reading paraprofessional could support those students in the area of reading. Two biology instructors in the area of science to reduce student-teacher ratios. Also, due to the post-secondary school requirements, there has been an increase in the need for more students to take a science to be able to go to, to college. They, they need, is it four years of science, Mr. Gordon? So more and more students are opting to take an additional year of science. So we need to have more instructors to be able to offer different science courses. And next is, I think there's another slide? Yes, thank you. Hospitality management to add an instructor. Right now, there's only, it's only a two-person program, so adding an additional instructor would allow more opportunity for students to participate in off-site learning experiences to practice and build their technical skills. Health services to add a school nurse due to the increased number of students that need health services and that are on health plans and that the school nurses see daily. In addition to all the added health interventions that COVID has added, an additional school nurse is, is quite necessary in a building this large. And lastly, physical education and health, one health instructor and one P E instructor due to the increase in student-teacher ratios in P E and health classes, which are up to anywhere between thirty and thirty-five students in each, in each class. We are asking for additional instructors in this area of physical education and health. And lastly, athletics, oh, no, I'm sorry, before athletics, there's H V A C, which is also very, very important. The added position will increase from a three-person program to a four-person program and allow for more reasonable teaching load and allow less, allow levels to be combined and actually allow us to add three students on each week to who we accept into the program. So it's increasing the program numbers by six, three each week. One school adjustment counselor to service more students and to, to support our students and help support their social, emotional health. We are asking for an additional school adjustment counselor. I think I'm out maintenance now. We're asking for one full-time groundskeeper. As you know, there was a retirement of a part-time position, so we're really asking for that part-time position to become one full-time groundskeeper position to help maintain the sixty-plus acres here at school and to keep it well, as you can see, it's well-kept. One full-time security guard to cover the summer months and increased activity during the summer. This would move to two full-time individuals. And lastly, athletic coaching due to the, the increased participation in athletics, which is wonderful, because we always want our students to engage. It's good for health and wellness and just good to be interactive in the school community. We're adding one assistant cheer coach, one assistant cross-country coach, one assistant indoor track coach, and one freshman volleyball coach. And also adding a freshman volleyball team. We did not have a freshman volleyball team. And that is it in regards to positions for the twenty-three school year. The next slide is the use of excess and deficiency. And Mike, are you, do you want to speak to that, or I can? Okay.
Yeah, I am here, you all hear me still?
Yes.
Good, all right. So I, I think I mentioned this, not maybe in as much length in previous slides, but I am recommending the use of the hundred thousand dollars in our excess and deficiency balance this year. And that's primarily for a couple of expenditures, as I listed down at the bottom, capital expenditures to vehicles, as well as our contract with U Mass Medical for our Medicaid filing, which produces revenue for us actually in a reimbursement. So those two costs and reducing the amount of excess and deficiency that we have used in previous budget cycles intentionally as a result of maintaining that balance as well as possible, just knowing that we have capital projects coming here in the future and in the off chance that we might need some excess and deficiency to make sure those projects go off without a hitch.
Our final slide is just in summary. So just to summarize, our operating budget for the F Y twenty-three school year is forty-nine million four hundred and forty-nine thousand and five hundred, which exceeds the required net school spending amount of forty-nine thousand three hundred and forty-nine million, I'm sorry, three hundred and forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars by a hundred thousand dollars. I think we, we just heard from Mike, from E, excess and deficiency to cover the non-net school spending eligible expenses. Our operating budget of forty-nine million three hundred and forty-nine thousand five hundred, as, as we said, must be spent to meet net school spending. We also have transportation costs, which are two million five hundred and twenty-five thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. Those costs are offset by the assessments to our towns, as well as the state reimbursement. The towns are assessed for transportation at one, one million five hundred and twenty thousand three hundred and four dollars, and the state reimbursement of one million five dollars and one million five. one million five. How about that? Go, I'm gonna go with it. The debt service of uh one million three hundred and thirty-five thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars. And this year we chose not to uh, no money going into O P E S. For a total budget of fifty-three million three hundred and ten thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars. On the revenue source side, uh it's sufficient to sustain our proposed budget. Again, uh the assessment from our town, towns and city, uh the minimum local contribution of fourteen million seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars along with our transportation assessment of one million five hundred and twenty dollars. Three hundred, no, one million five hundred and twenty thousand three hundred and four dollars. Our debt assessment of one million uh three hundred and thirty-five thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars. Uh, for a total uh assessment amongst our four towns of seventeen million six hundred and thirty-four thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars. Along with our chapter seventy-eight of thirty-four million five hundred and seventy dollars. Five hundred, jeez, my number is thirty-four million five hundred and seventy thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars uh from our chapter seventy-eight. Uh, that's where we get from our, our pupil expenditures. Our chapter seventy-one transportation aid from the state of one million uh excess and deficiency of a hundred thousand dollars. Totals fifty-three million three hundred and ten thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars with an expenditure budget uh supported by our revenue sources. Any questions about our F Y twenty-three budget?
Uh, I, uh, know that we've had two previous meetings, including this one. And uh, had many hours of discussion about this budget. Uh, with that being the case, uh, as my, uh, I, as the school committee chairman, I would like to put forward a motion to pass the budget for fifty-three million three hundred and ten thousand dollars. Fifty-three million three hundred and ten thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars for school year two thousand and twenty-two and school year two thousand and twenty-three.
So we're gonna hold that motion, uh chairman, for the next meeting.
Oh, okay. So we'll just move forward. We'll move forward with this meeting.
Yeah.
Um, and essentially, um, present this final budget as a school committee.
Yes, and, and I, and I'm sure Mister Knight, if he's still there, appreciate your support. And we thank you for allowing us to present this budget this evening.
Thank you.
Lot of hard work went into that budget. Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Mike, thank you. Great job.
Thank you, Mike.
Mike, again, congratulations. Get some rest.
We need a motion to close the meeting.
Make a motion to close it. Uh, second, motion adjourned. Roll call.
Mister Bahu?
Yes.
Mister Hatzis?
Yes.
Mister Warren?
Yes.
Mister Lemay?
Curtis, you there?
Yes, I am.
Are you in, quiet with adjournment?
Yeah.
Mister Kitchin?
Yes.
Mister Kitchin?
Yes. Meeting adjourned.
Meeting adjourned.